Did I get that right this time? Of course, okay, I'll keep, I'll keep trying. Eventually, I'll get it right. Do I have a second?
I'll second Dan.
Okay, all right. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, so Cindy, you said there's nobody in the audience, so we don't, or on the virtual audience. Okay, so we'll skip over the public comments. And we will go to our main topic tonight, which is the urban forestry program review and discussion. So take it away, Roxanne.
Okay, everyone, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So you haven't seen this in a while, but hopefully some of you remember that we were working on it. The urban forestry management plan is. There's a lot of noise happening in the lobby. Thank you. It's the culmination of a lot of work done by consultant and then also city staff. So we're gonna, hopefully you had a chance to review the report. I just want to let you know that if during this discussion, if anything comes up, please feel free to email me afterward if you have like specific edits. That would help me like remember it and like really understand hello. Understand what you mean by, by everything. I'm going to be taking notes as we go, but always welcome follow up afterwards. Okay, come on. All right, so the.
Second, just wanted to make note that Commissioner Jordan has joined us.
Great. Full house, this is great. Okay, so the plan process included three kind of different steps. We had, of course, the tree canopy assessment, which was a remote sensing exercise in which the consultant kind of looked at different GIS layers and aerial imagery to determine our canopy cover. And then they also broke that down, as you probably saw in the plan, further by land use type and zoning types and also by census tract, they broke it down into a lot of different kind of little chunks, so we can understand where trees are, where trees aren't. And they also use this information to identify priority planting areas. So they used a composite matrix using you know, kind of socio economic factors, risk for wildfire, risk for drought, and different kind of cover types, so like evergreen versus coniferous, to understand where we could plant in the city and get the biggest bang for our buck as from like a social and infrastructure kind of on the ground sense. Any questions about the tree canopy assessment? Yes, Commissioner Jordan? No, from GIS data and aerial imagery that's available from the Department of National Resources. Yeah. Oh, I'm not sure. I think it was 2017. Yeah. Commissioner, does it genie?
Hey, just so, I was wondering on the you know, because of, you know, the, they're inside the, the report, there's the seemed like there's kind of like a sep- a separation, which I can totally understand between UGA and within the city limits. And, but it is, the UGA canopy is included here and there throughout the report. I was just wondering, like in the executive summary, whether it'd be worthwhile to include the, just, you know, just very simply, just the tree canopy percentage for the UGA, or is that like, is it strictly uses mostly a comparison against what's within the city limits? That's the question I have.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely make sure to clarify that.
I think I saw that actually, that number is like a bit higher than it was for the city, like forty eight percent?
Yeah, probably because it's less developed. Because it's not.
But I think it's a good point, because I wanted to echo that, you know, the importance of the UGA is really, it's really still our forest.
Yeah.
It's affecting us, so where we have data, we ought to, you know, include it, even though it's not part of our municipal responsibility.
Yeah, okay.
Our back, it's part of our backyard.
Yes. Okay, good points. Any other questions about tree canopy assessment? Okay, so the next part was outreach that included partner interviews. Meaning people, you know, other people that have an interest in Gig Harbor's canopy, notably the Palop tribe. And then we also, the consultant also conducted staff interviews, just kind of understand where the pain points are with urban forest management for the city. We conducted a community survey, we sent out over three thousand postcards to all addresses, business residential in the city with a QR code to send people to our online survey. We had, I think, four hundred and forty responses to that survey, and that's captured in the outreach chapter and also in the appendix, you kind of have like the more raw data. And then, of course.
Roxanne, uh, yeah, that seemed like a pretty decent percentage of returns to me. Is that statistically, statistically, is that what you would normally expect or?
That was way more.
Way more.
For public, as far as public outreach goes, that's incredible, because that's like, uh, what, more than ten percent response? Yeah, I think you can expect anywhere from ten to twenty percent response when you do a survey like this. So, yeah, we were really pleased with the turnout on that. And then, of course, we had planning commission meetings and the opportunity for public comment. Um, the last piece of it was a strategy and action development, so based on the outreach, indicators of sustainable forage man, forest management tool, which we'll go over. And also just best management practices recommended by the consultant. We have a series of goals, strategies and actions that are in, I think it's chapter four. And so I'm hoping that in this meeting today, we can focus on those and kind of talk about what, where, where you think these goals, strategy and actions are, and whether or not we need to refine those anymore. Oh. Can I do that? Oh, I think Cindy has to do that. Okay, so I just wanted to give an example or just give a kind of a benchmark of where we are. We're at about forty point seven percent canopy cover in the city. And so relative to other cities in the region, Gig Harbor is doing pretty well. I know that a lot of cities that have experienced, you know, like rapid growth and development, like you can see they have hard time maintaining canopy. You know, bigger cities like Seattle and Tacoma, they have canopy cover of thirty percent or less. So the consultant suggested that our biggest challenge is really to preserve what we have. They threw out, throughout the report, you know, that if we immediately planted, you know, every single potential priority planting area in the city, we could get up to sixty four percent canopy. But I just want you to know that is a very aspirational number, considering that we still need to allow for housing development based on our Washington state growth mandate. Any questions about canopy cover as it relates to the region?
Well, isn't that kind of one of the biggest dilemmas we're facing?
Of course.
To the balance. I have a green light. Isn't that working? Oh, is that better? Well, that's one of the dilemmas I'm seeing between in this plan and aspirational, and it's great, it's aspirational. But it seems like it's going to run up against development reality and where, where are we going to bend?
Yeah.
Is it going to bend towards trees? Are we going to take them all down and put in a some public facilities or private, you know, residential developments? How do we maintain that line?
So in the consultant's analysis and the urban tree canopy assessment, they did find that the the city through its own planting efforts and maintenance was able to actually increase canopy cover over the study. The study period of, I think, two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty of about eight acres. And so, oh no, excuse me, sixteen acres, but then of canopy cover. But then development took away about eight acres, so net eight acres of increase. And they also found that there were a lot of places that are city-owned parcels where we have a lot of opportunity to plant still. So there is still a ton of opportunity to plant and to increase our urban tree canopy cover. And I think in concert with an update of our landscape and tree ordinance that I think will provide more flexible regulations for developers and also more incentive to keep bigger trees. I think we, I think the outlook is positive is what I'm trying to say, but I understand that, yes, this is, it is going to be a challenge to challenge across the region.
Roxanne or Robin, did everybody get sent out a copy of that memo from former Commissioner Brown?
Everybody.
All the planning commission members?
I did not, I did not, I, I can't.
Okay. Uh, yeah, because I thought he had some interesting perspectives in there that would relate to our forest plan here. Okay.
Okay. I have kind of an odd question.
Okay.
When, when a tree is planted somewhere, it, it obviously has a very small canopy because it's young. At what, at what point in time does that begin to be counted, if you will, in any of our canopy assessment surveys?
I mean, immediately, because if you plant a tree, even if it's small, it has a canopy. And then trees spend about half of their life growing, half their life dying, and tree lifespan, tree size, the amount of leaf cover, all depends on species and age and how well it's maintained. So it is really imperative that we get trees in the ground and that, and maintenance, 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 maintenance is like so, so important for sustaining our urban forest.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and I was just thinking that, I, I have it in the thing that I'm going to send to you is that you know, maybe some, just general definitions like on what you would see be ideal maintenance policy or something, just so that it's somewhere really, you know, as as defined as possible, so, so that it would capture some of the things you, you know, that are because a lot of times that's what is not unsaid, especially like in what you're, in the maintenance and whatnot, could really come back and just, you know, either just because, what do you call it? When, you know, they, they say, well, if it's not there, then you know, we don't have to, the maintenance can be minimized.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that'll come into the implementation part of this plan, which will come after we kind of like.
Oh, okay.
This going. But yeah, that's a good point that maybe we could emphasize maintenance more in this plan if that wasn't completely intuitive when you're reading it. Any other questions about canopy cover?
Oh, and when, um, you know, just from what, just spinning off of what you said that, and also from a, I think, a couple of meetings back was, um, you know, bringing in the, the pocket parks as a way of being able to help, you know, add more canopy and those, and the, and those properties that are owned.
Yeah.
So, I mean, is it any benefit to explicitly saying that?
I think just having a more explicit, or just having a planting plan, a long-range planting plan is a part of the recommendations in the report, because Public Works doesn't currently have a planting, a tree planting plan, because they don't have the staff to carry it out. But if we had a planting plan, it would include public spaces for sure. Commissioner Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, does the city have any wildlife corridor assessments? And the reason I'm asking is, you know, I, trees are very important to everybody, but I, I would be an advocate for being as strategic as possible about where we focus those plantings. And I've seen, I think it was City of Tacoma did a corridor, wildlife corridor study and focused some of their tree canopy strategies around that corridor. Have you ever seen or heard anything like that?
Um, it might be a GIS layer we have, but I don't know that it's in any formal plan. I, the only one I can think of would probably be like the Cushman Trail Corridor, but yeah, I don't think that's a, an explicit plan or.
But we do have critical protection areas.
Yeah.
In the city, and that to me would be almost the same as, it could be a wetland or something like that.
Yeah.
That might be a layer that would be very complimentary of what Commissioner Jordan's talking about. Because you know, you want to get the best bang for your buck.
Exactly.
With the tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
I was thinking.
Wildlife, stormwater management.
Yeah.
And put it in the right place, getting as much as you can out of it.
Yes.
Yeah, it's to, to add, it's, it seems like the, if the goal is just like a percentage, that's only half the story. And I, and I'm not getting it, and you're probably going to walk us through that, but I'm just kind of curious. Is it like, is that the metric? Keep it at forty percent plus, or what is the metric, I guess?
Um, and we, we don't have a canopy goal yet. That is like part of, that is one of the strategies within the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hmm. Okay, so, um, this first part of the plan is state of the urban forest. We already talked a ton about land cover. But we, again, we have about forty one percent tree canopy. About thirty percent of the city right now is hard surface, so that's gravel, pavement, parking lots, buildings. Seventeen point one percent is low vegetation, so that's grassland or any kind of vegetation that isn't tree canopy. Six point five percent is bare soil, five point four percent is open water. So the consultant really concentrated on like, where can we plant, where in these low vegetation and bare soil areas can we plant that will get us, you know, socio-economic benefits and infrastructure benefits? Kind of already talked about this, but we've had an eight acre net increase, so point five percent since two thousand seventeen. The consultant found that private land cover, so development was a significant driver of change. As we can imagine, but there's a lot of opportunity to increase based on their priority planting areas. That's not explicit, an explicit map in the plan, as you may have noticed, but we do have it as a GIS layer, so that Public Works can use that when they inevitably make a planting plan. Any questions about the state of the urban forest?
I have one question on that. And you need to probably be ready for this, because as I read the report, you're talking about a net increase of eight acres over the last four-year period. And I think when others read this report, they're going to say, how can that possibly be? And given what's happened in the development of the community over these past few years. So I, I don't know, you must have some detailed information that supports that, I mean, or Davey did. But if, if there's ways you can kind of underpin that with some facts, I think would be helpful, because I, I'm probably not the only person that has that same first reaction to hearing it, if the tree canopy cover has increased over that period of time.
Yeah.
So.
Um. I don't, yeah, I can't remember all the details right now, but I mean, also just, you know, trees grow, so there's like a slight increase through that, but then also planting, like even though we don't have an exact, like a planting plan, we are planting trees and replacing trees, but, so just imagine what could happen if we had a planting plan. But good point, I will make sure to be more explicit about how how we got that increase. Uh, so that was done through the whole city limits, and then they would like overlay zoning information, so the zone would tell you if, whether it's city-owned or private land. Eight acre net increase, yes, for the whole city. Yeah.
So kind of like a question about, about, so the, on, I think it's page eight, section one dot one. Are the one hundred and seventy nine acres in the thirty one parks and sixteen miles of trails, is that? I'm assuming that's also included in the acreage count and the canopy count percentage?
Can you repeat that?
On page eight.
Uh-huh.
Uh, section one dot one. There, there's a mention of one hundred and seventy nine acres and thirty one parks and sixteen miles of trail. So is, so if, I'm, I'm assuming that's inside the city limits.
Yes.
And then would that all, would the, would that be also included in the, the numbers, you know, for the city limit canopy?
I think that was just an, an inventory, so the consultant could understand what kind of assets we have.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's included, all the, the park areas, trail areas, those are included in the assessment.
Yeah, good, yeah, the only reason I bring it up is that in the executive summary, it said that the, the number of trees in the parks weren't counted, but the canopy cover was, right?
Yeah, so that is a good distinction. We haven't done, so one thing that we do want to complete is kind of a comprehensive inventory of all of the publicly owned trees, so that would include trees in parks, and that would be pre-time intensive, because it would mean technicians going out, a set, going to like each tree that we have documented, assessing its condition, its species, its diameter, standard height, any maintenance that needs to be done, and, you know, putting that into a database and geolocating it. So that's a very different exercise than what happened here, which was a remote sensing thing. So we didn't really have anybody on the ground doing that. So yeah, that's a good distinction to make. But like that type of information is what could really help the city refine a planting plan, because that would also tell us what species aren't doing well and need to be replaced. It would also help us understand kind of what like, what are the common, maybe like pests or damage that's occurring to different trees? And whether or not there are species that we shouldn't be planting anymore, whether there's species that are more prone to climate, prone to damage from, or effects from climate change. And also whether we're at risk for like different pests or diseases based on whether our canopy is diverse enough. So there's a lot of reasons why we should complete a comprehensive inventory. Any other questions about state of the urban forest? Yeah.
Well, this is just a, you know, like a, I don't know what they call it, but, you know, it's my, uh, my nemesis when walking around and, you know, sometimes I want to say this, you know, I go around with some pruners and try to cut the ivy stem from when it's climbing up the tree.
Oh.
And, you know, because it, I mean, in a certain sense, it's preservation of the canopy long, longer term. And that, that would just fall under maintenance?
I think so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Or tree work, okay.
Okay. All right, so another tool that the, you know, there's a lot of different ways to assess urban forests and a lot of different metrics that we have. So one of the tools that the consultant used to assess the city's operations, municipal operations, is this indicators of sustainable forest management. So they kind of went through these different kind of points that, that we could assess and, you know, kind of gave us a, a score. We're kind of middle of the road, we lower middle of the road, since you know, before they did this canopy assessment, we didn't have one. So, you know, now we're good on the canopy assessment, because they did it. But in a lot of other senses, we're not doing, I think, everything that we can from a municipal operation sense to support our urban forest. But again, you know, this is just a benchmark. This is, I'm, I'm hoping that with the adoption of this plan, making this part of city goals, that we can make a lot of positive movement on all of these. Any questions about indicators of sustainable forest management? This is part of the appendix of the plan. It goes into a lot more detail there. Okay. So a little bit more detail on the interviews and outreach that we did. So these are kind of like the results of the interviews and outreach. So when talking to staff, the consultant found that staff, the staff resource, so people available to do tree work is a limiting factor for tree planting and tree maintenance. We don't have a tree planting plan. And they recommended creating an urban forester or an city arborist position, so that person would, you know, their full-time job would be taking care of all things related to the urban forest. They probably wouldn't be, you know, doing a planting plan full-time, so we could also have them doing community outreach and education, reviewing tree permits. You know, partnering with other organizations to do tree planting. There's a lot of capacity that we could gain from hiring someone with that kind of expertise. We heard from council and commissions is that they recognize the importance of urban forestry and they want more outreach and education to be done, so that the public knows how to plant and take care of trees on private property. Um, and then our community survey, again, we got, that number's wrong, should be for forty plus survey responses. We heard that people really love trees. They're not super sure they want to pay for it. I found it really interesting that more than fifty percent of survey respondents didn't know that we have tree regulations, which I think is why people get so worked up when, I mean, people are going to get upset when a tree comes down, of course, but I think that if this populace doesn't know that we are regulating this in some way, I think that would be super upsetting. So I think that, I just say all of that to reinforce that we, having a staff person to be able to conduct outreach and education, I think would be really, really helpful, so that people think we're not just letting everybody cut down trees all the time with no regulation. Any questions about the interview and outreach portion of the plan? Yeah.
I get assessed every year in my property tax, a, a small assessment for a weed control district. Is there any provision that you are aware of in state law that would allow the city to set up a forest protection district within the city?
Hmm, I haven't heard of anything like that. I could ask for a tax assessment purposes.
Well, it's, it's not really so much a tax as it is just a special assessment.
Yeah. Oh, well, that's kind of what they put in the survey.
Yeah.
Would there be a?
I'm wondering is a mechanism to get there, if they could establish a district that would do that, and possibly that could even incorporate the, uh, urban, uh, the UGA, the growth area.
So county and.
County and the city get together on that and start collecting some money to plant trees and save trees.
I don't know that much about that, and it's, you know, and the voters get a voice there. I'm not sure what.
Yeah, they probably would have, but, uh, you know, if we're, if we did a good enough job and
Yeah.
Putting this forth, we might be able to generate the public support.
If we can justify the use of it and pay for position or, um, or something along those lines. Set up my mission. Yeah. It's certainly possible. You have modern support there.
Yeah. Yeah, it was like, I, I mean, I'm sure you saw the results in the plan, but I think twenty seven percent of people said yes, just. Yes, just no problem for supporting a property assessment, and then it was like. Forty something percent said, maybe with conditions, like they would probably want to know where the money was going.
That's, that's the main thing, is if they can see that the money is going into planting trees. And saving trees, that's where you're gonna get your support.
Yeah. Um, another uh opportunity to potentially. Get money for trees is uh the consultant threw out the idea of setting up a urban forestry bank or fund. And setting up a, a mechanism for fee in lieu. Um, contribution to the fund, so if, for example, a developer can't, like, I reviewed a, a plat recently where. It was a pretty forested site and the developer had a requirement to plant a lot of trees. They ended up planting trees that were like smaller than two inches uh. Uh, on the recommendation of the arborist, but. That's an opportunity where they're like, okay, it, it could be potentially just like a real, like. The trees might end up too dense, you know, it's, we don't know if we can fit all these trees in here. Uh, but we can pay into this fund, so the city can plant trees elsewhere. So that's what that fee in lieu means and.
We charge a developer for every mature tree that he cuts down. So, for example, every mature tree is gonna cost you five bucks or something like that, or ten dollars or whatever.
Yeah, so that's another idea for revenue generation for uh tree planting.
Yeah, cause I noticed uh that we just had a subdivision approved per acres, I think it was. And we're gonna lose seven hundred trees. From uh, from that subdivision, and if we charge them five dollars a tree, we could generate thirty five hundred dollars. I know we can't do that, do that development, but that's the kind of thing I'm thinking about.
Yeah, for the future.
Um, Roxanne, I really think that's a, a good option to have in our, in our toolkit. I was gonna ask you if there's other jurisdictions around here that have done that successfully.
Yeah, I, well, I would need to understand more about your idea of success, but definitely a lot of uh jurisdictions do. Utilize fee in lieu um. And for, for trees for a lot of other things. Yeah.
My second follow up to that would be, if you did have such a program, it has to be. Based on a, a, a dollar value that's significant, you can't have a five dollar, I'm, I'm going to say, John, no five bucks, I'm gonna go. It, it ought to be uh substantial enough so that you can accumulate in your bank enough money to go. Uh, purchase more mature trees or better trees or relocate them elsewhere.
Yeah.
It can't just be a pittance.
Uh, yes.
Kind of a cover, political cover for getting rid of the trees, it has to generate something substantial to make it worthwhile in my mind.
Yeah. I would also say that I think most people would agree that just leaving a tree in the ground is the best option, so that, you know, this. Tree fee in lieu thing would be, you know, it, it wouldn't be for every single type of development. It would be for special situations. Okay, any other question?
Yeah. And, and is it possible if I, 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 where was I? The, I, I'm not sure if it's within the city limits, but the uh, this, the south end of the Cushman Trail. Way down by twenty fourth. Um, the, it looks like there's a development starting there and. The, you know, the typical way is just, they just. You know, bare earth, and then they, you know, cause it's the, you know, it's the easiest thing to do. And it just drives me nuts, that, that, it's my bias for sure, and I'm being upfront about it, but um. And a long time ago in a land far away, working some of that. You know, you can save some of the trees, it's just that it's, you know, it's a little bit more expensive because, you know, it's a bit of a hassle getting your, your heavy equipment in there. That kind of, whatever, you know, but it's like, you know, that, is there a way of making it so that, you know, the carrot and stick kind of thing? So that they, you know, so for some of these upcoming developments that they really do leave some trees in the ground.
Yeah, so I have a working draft of a tree and landscape ordinance that is proposing a tree um density. calculation, so it would help preserve larger trees, so developers get kind of like credit for. I think we kind of, we talked about this at a previous planning commission meeting, but developers will get credit for preserving, you know, you have so many. Tree allotted tree units you need per acre, and if you preserve a larger tree, that gets you. You know, a larger portion of your uh tree allotment, and then um. You know, you have to, if you cut something down, you have to replant, you know, in a certain way, there's a lot of different ways to go about it, that's just one. Um, but I think between reconfiguring how we think about trees, cause right now the code really just talks about trees as like a way to buffer. You know, it doesn't talk about the ecological or aesthetic kind of uh benefits of trees, so having a. Tree code that is more flexible, I think will help preserve trees, and then also we don't have really any provision for. Incentives or bonuses for preserving trees or for cottage hu- housing development that um. You've had kind of discouraged, well, doesn't totally discourage, but allows more flexibility and you don't get that whole like bare earth thing. Also need to say, you know, I'm sure everybody. Lives in a place right now where they had to cut down trees to build it, so it's just kind of part of development. Obviously, it's really upsetting to see trees come down, but um people have to live somewhere, so. Again, it's that balance that Commissioner Soltes was talking about. Um, we want to lean on the side of preserving more trees, but you know, we can't just like squash development completely.
I would, I think the credit idea is, is excellent, and I agree. I mean, we talked about it before, having the carrot aspect of it is really important.
Yeah.
I think um just based on the, the fee in lieu of. On the, on the stick side, making the fee in lieu of comparable to the cost of cutting it down, you know, high enough that they have to really. Combined with the requirements to replant. Make the developers really have to think about which trees are essential for them to cut down to make this development happen. And so we're, we're dual incentivizing them to preserve existing trees.
Yeah, great point, just a comment to definitely like bring your microphone close to you, cause I'm seeing that the camera isn't catching everyone. When you're speaking. Yeah.
So um kind of tagging along on something like that, what you were just talking about was um. You know, on, on your benefits list of what the trees bring, you know, it's a, you know, page and a half, it's great, you know, and. But I, it struck a memory of one other benefit um is um sound reduction. You know, if, if you, you know, plant them, if you plant, give me a second here. I think it's like, it's about a hundred, a hundred foot thick. If it's, if it's designed correctly, it can actually do a decibel reduction of anywhere between and. Hold this out like a dead fish, okay, I think it's like somewhere between like eight and ten percent. You know, uh, or seven decibels to eight, nine decibels, so it's a significant um reduction in decibels. And it might be something that could be used to a developer and saying, hey, look, if you leave this and actually if you tweak this. You can actually use it as a marketing angle on, on selling your development, if you, you know. If you, if you start working with, with some of these benefits, and it doesn't just have to be the sound one, but. Other benefits that would actually be seen by potential buyers. Um, of any type of development, whether it's a um residential house or. You know, apartment building or commercial, um, it might be, I don't know, anyway, so.
One of the most egregious situations that we have here in Gig Harbor with respect to the noise reduction. Is the McCormick Creek development, where you have. Pretty much all the trees have been taken care of, taken out, except maybe there's one here and one here and one here, and it's right next to a rifle range. If you walk by there or ride your bike in that area, you're gonna sound like you're in the middle of a firefight.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
And so, yeah, what you're saying absolutely has a lot of merit, because I think there are a lot of situations, and again, you also have the freeway. Where we've got some, a lot of noise generation going on, that we need that tree to buffer that.
Yeah. Definitely, all right, any other comments on the interview and outreach results? Okay. Um, okay, so we're, we've gotten to, I kind of told you about kind of how the plan was generated. So um I can't, you know, I didn't want to just throw every single action and strategy up on the, the screen. Hopefully you've had a chance to review it in the plan that we sent, and please feel free to um send me any edits via email. Really helps me track them, and um I'm taking this to council. Study session September seventeen, so if you can get me. Edits by end of this month or first week of September, then I can incorporate it before it goes to council study session. So end of this month would be great for edits on the climate action plan and this plan.
Roxanne, may I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, I think having the more specific, the, you know, boots on the ground inventory is a fantastic idea. For all of the reasons that you stated earlier.
Yeah.
But do you guys, have y'all been able to give it thought on what kind of time requirement and therefore what kind of. Timeframe we're looking on, we're looking at to develop that?
I, I think it's a few months of inventory, or maybe at least one month with a few consultants on the ground. I do know that um. So the Inflation Reduction Act is pushing out a lot of funding to states, and I know that uh Washington State is going to have. And specifically, the Department of Natural Resources is going to have a lot of money to send out to cities and counties for. This type of work, so I'm hopeful that there will be a grant down the line that we can apply for to complete that.
Um, on that note, I guess I would um maybe encourage, depending on the amount of the grant or what kind of funding was available. Would it be wise to prioritize by certain areas, uh in other words, in the city, like where, where we know the least about, we could study the most? As opposed to trying to do everything all at once or?
Yeah, I suppose we could, we do have in. We have an inventory of, I think, about twenty five hundred trees, public trees, but it's not all of them, so the lift will be a. Teensy bit lighter, since we have that information, but um again, it's not gonna be every single tree in the city, it'll be trees on public property. Yeah, Commissioner Jordan.
Hey, thank you, um, so uh forgive me, does this urban forestry plan get incorporated into the comp plan? Will it be a chapter in the comp plan?
It'll be adopted by resolution and it will be its own plan, but we can certainly have um. Goals in the comp plan that address urban forestry. Yeah.
Good, um, and then um. I just feel really strongly that um, like it's a great goal, improve the urban forestry, but it's not really measurable. And I feel like we're missing an opportunity, I don't know, you know, what the metric is, but. That twenty years from now, there can be a lot of debate about that language and whether we were successful or not. So I'd really encourage staff to consider like, you know, X percentage, that's the easy one to think of, but.
Yeah.
Um, or, or um something that you can really say and check whether or not you achieved it, the strategies are great. Um, but that's a, that's a. That, that goal without a, without something more concrete is not, um, I, I don't know how helpful it is.
Okay, good point.
I, I would offer a comment kind of twofold, first, I think uh measuring the canopy. Is a more viable view than doing a tree inventory. Uh, for the simple reason that frequently trees grow together, very close together, and you could count. Maybe three trees that essentially form one canopy when looked at above. Uh, but in, in the specific goal area, what makes sense to me that, that might be. Reasonably able to be tracked would be a goal such as to maintain the forty or forty one percent tree canopy we have now. Uh, cause we know we're gonna lose some due to development, uh some due to death of trees. And, and hopefully we're going to be encouraging uh planting along the way. Uh, so as the city grows to meet the UGA requirements. Uh, a, a goal of say forty percent that we have now, maintaining that, I think would be a viable measure.
Thank you, I would also just offer that um. Yeah, the, we have our urban canopy cover, but the, the inventory is also, is important. Because that will give us informations on uh species, and so it's really important to mitigate the effects of pests and disease. That um, the percentage of species in a, in a region is diverse, because say if we have. Eighty percent Acer species, so maple. If we get um some kind of maple blight or like some kind of pest that is specific to maples. Eighty percent of our canopy is going to be affected, and we also know that dog fur, which is a majority of our species right now. Sudasuga, um, it is being heavily affected by anthropogenic climate change. And so being able to recommend to developers and to uh property owners, hey, please don't plant. X species, we have enough in the city, please don't plant X species, they're gonna be. Really affected by climate change is gonna be really important going forward. Um, so just want to underscore the importance of the inventory for that specifically.
I'd like to kind of follow up on those last two excellent comments, um, and I think that it would make sense. To change that goal, whether we want to stay, stay with maintaining our present canopy or try to grow it a little bit. But I think instead of improve the urban forest resource over the next twenty years, it should say maintain or increase whatever. The forest canopy to X percentage.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, I think that is um, I see Commissioner Jordan nodding. Yeah, since we haven't adopted an overall canopy goal, I think just saying for now that we maintain it. And then once we um maybe get a little bit more. Um, input or study on this, adopting an overall canopy goal, and we can revise, you know, this is a living document, we can revise it. Once we have um a little bit more, this is our first urban forestry management plan, you know, so um I. I appreciate that idea and I can definitely incorporate that.
Um, thank you, uh, you know, I know it's the first one, but. We, we have limited staff and resources and who knows how long it'll be till you get back to this and all that sort of stuff, so I'd still encourage you to think about a. A, 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 a metric.
Um, yeah.
I, I would also really encourage the city to leverage technology, like it's hard for me to believe that a urban uh. An er, er, uh, what's a tree, sorry, I'm blanking on what a tree person is a uh. Arborist, thank you, a forester couldn't look at a um, you know, an aerial and help identify clumps of species. Or use drones, I'm not a, I'm not an urban forester, so I don't know, but hope, hopefully, I mean, a, a survey where you have to have eyes on every tree in the city. Sounds like a really.
It is, it has been it, it undertaking, but it is something that a lot of cities have done, and like, I live in Seattle and there's like. You can like go to a webpage and you can like click on like any public tree and it'll like tell you a story about it.
Yeah. And Seattle probably has a full, that, you know, like an urban forestry department, but um. The other thing I was gonna say in the strategies, what I don't see here, and maybe it's coming up, is um anything around uh regulatory and. And the way we were having that conversation like around permitting or development, you know, I kind of think of it as like avoid. Minimize, then mitigate, and under the avoid and minimize, you can incentivize, right, you can save a big tree and get credit for it. Um, but, but there's no strategy here from a permitting regulatory perspective that. Um, if I understood you correctly, Roxanne, you said, you know, really all the code says today is you gotta have a buffer.
Yeah, I think that's.
Is that, is that coming?
Hmm, wait, where is that, that might be under one of the actions that's not up here. Cause I, I know that adopting a tree ordinance or like updating the tree ordinance is definitely an action, I'm sorry, I don't have the. Plan printed out in front of me, I should.
Thank you.
If I could follow up on that a little bit, um. I'm concerned about the development regulation piece as well as the tree ordinance piece, as well as the plan, it seems to me that these things all need to be. Woven together to make an effective implementation strategy, so I don't know if I know the right words when we say development regulations and. So I don't know if I know the right words when we say development regulations and which ones that would require being reworked. I know that through tree ordinances, you've already talked to us about that and that's a key part of this. But is there more beyond the tree ordinance in the municipal code and the development regs that need to be tweaked?
That's a great question. So when I talked about, you know, permitting uh cottage uh development and allowing more flexibility in, or allowing for incentives, that's what I mean by the other pieces of the development regulations. That's a really good question. Um. So when we, yeah, we can rework the tree ordinance and we can talk about how we regulate trees. But then we would, we would need to go into other parts. You know, we have zoning code. We would go look at what zones would be appropriate to, to allow for, you know, maybe density bonuses if you save more trees, density. Yeah, requiring clustering, cottage housing, that type of stuff. So I, I think that's what you're talking about and we definitely have our eyes on that.
So that's part of the implementation of this plan?
Yes.
I would say try to be clear about that next step in the UFMP.
Okay.
I mean, I know you mentioned, you talked about it a little bit, but it's all gotta happen to make it really effective in the long run. Got to go after the development regs um seriously.
Okay, that should probably be its own action too, because there's a tree ordinance and then there's also I think actions relating specifically to zoning. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I have a quick question. You said there are some of the goals and strategies that are not contained within the slides.
The actions aren't. Um, so these are just the goals and strate- goals and strategies up there on the screen. And then the actions are in the plan, but they're, they're pretty numerous. So I didn't wanna dump them all on a
I just want to confirm that the incentives and the fees and requirements are spelled out or at least addressed in this if they are spelled out within zoning because our building regulations. Um.
You mean like addressed as an action, like developing incentives, developing?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Um, maybe we should just, maybe we should just move to the next set, which is municipal operations. And then if anything comes up that's related to urban for, I'm sure something will, I'm just taking notes. But we can just look at these strategies and, and kind of talk through them. So these are, this is a goal and strategies related to, you know, municipal operations. So how the city allocates staff, how um, what kind of regulations it's adopting and um how it's managing um, waste, I guess. That was a, an example from the consultant, the reducing forestry waste. I'm not sure that that's that big of a problem here, but may as well think about it.
Could you repeat that? I'm not sure I got the question.
Oh, sorry. The last strategy, reduce forestry waste through a wood reutilization program. That was a, that was suggested by the consultant, but I'm not really sure if that's actually a, an issue in, in the city. Yeah, I think we use, I think we use chips like on parks and, and landscaping and things like that.
I wouldn't say it's a, a big driver in my mind.
Okay.
I could use some chips for sure.
Yeah, we can get, I can talk to Public Works and see if, if this even is an issue. Um, so a lot of these, you know, maintain the urban forestry plan, staff and train appropriately for urban forest management. Um, an action there would be hiring an arborist or um maybe or more maintenance staff if that seems out of reach for um council or the budget. Just so that Public Works has the staff resource that they need to ma- maintain the trees that we have. And then establishing trees as infrastructure, that means um, you can probably see some of the actions in front of you if you have the plan in front of you. But that would mean that requiring uh, you know, public works projects to budget for and incorporate trees when they, you know, tear up a sidewalk, redo a sidewalk, redo Burnham Drive, things like that. So that trees are part, trees and their maintenance are part of capital projects.
Hmm.
So I was kind of wondering, you know, cause I was looking at that page that had the percentages for the different areas, like the waterfront and whatnot. And the waterfront was really low, it was like eight percent or something. And along that line, what you were just mentioning with Public Works, is there a way of trying to move, move that percentage up higher? I, I know there's not a whole lot of places down there, but to your point where it's like if they're gonna tear up some concrete here or there or, you know, whatever that, cause it um
Well, I can tell you that at Scansy Park, there are some alders growing to a height that like barely touches the bottom of the view line of where the picnic tables are there. And people are freaking out. So trees on the waterfront will be a hard sell for I think anybody, is what I'm trying to say. Yes, the views or something? Yeah, yeah. People cannot stomach not being able to see the water from, yeah, and I'm sure, yeah. What's that? Yeah, exactly. Commissioner Jordan?
Um, I was curious, Roxanne, if you thought about as a strategy. So you've got the, the second one there is staff and train. So that's about a resource, right? We need, we need a resource. Would this be a good place to put like a fee and loo program or some sort of revenue generating program as a strategy here too, so that it helps offset the cost of more resources? Seems like that, that they would augment each other.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on that, um, is the county have any kind of urban forestry plan right now presently?
That's a good question. I'm not, I mean, they have Pierce County is really on it, so.
Yeah, I would wonder if there'd be an opportunity to partner.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, just given that, you know, us on our own is a small little island in a much larger area of, of a lot of forest. Um, if there'd be a way to share a forester or, or a um
Oh, I see.
You know, um, someone who could kind of oversee the whole peninsula for that matter.
Maybe. Um, yeah, wouldn't hurt to ask. Yeah. It'd be hard because we wouldn't be their boss.
I think it would be a good idea if we, if there is staff that we can share with either the county or other jurisdictions. But I can tell you just from observation of riding around and walking around in the uh urban growth area, unincorporated areas. Uh, the county does not seem particularly concerned with preserving trees. I've seen massive amounts of trees cut to build a single house. Um, you know, just to the point where it gets absurd.
As in every single tree on the lawn?
Yeah.
I, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I have a comment, specific comment on one of those strategy, actions actually.
Yeah.
Um, review and revise the UFMP every five to ten years.
Mm-hmm.
I would get rid of that to ten. I mean, five years seems like a, a reasonable time to do this every, over again.
Awesome.
Less wiggle room. When we're gone.
Yes, appreciate that.
And also I think, by the way, the urban forester idea is probably the most critically important action on this whole thing. Because once you get a person that's there in place, they can really do a lot of good. And if there's not one person dedicated to that, then everybody's kind of doing it on a part-time basis.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think that's gonna give you a, the product the city really wants in the end.
Yeah, uh, when they interviewed staff, I think they came up with, I think it's like a point three or point four full-time, full FTE was working on urban forestry per year. That's not a ton of time.
Does Wash, does the University of Washington have a forestry department or school?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any possibility of partnering with them to have some of their students serve internships as our uh urban forester?
We could. I think that would be, I think internships are difficult with our union. I think that's a difficult sell, or, or at least that's what I've been told before with other types of internships. Um, but yeah, could, could ask. Uh, I think it's also hard if someone's only here for like a couple of months, getting them to really like feel invested and take ownership of the urban forests as well.
Well, how about for doing the uh forest inventory? It's a summer job for some forestry students.
Maybe, um, but it, it would also, we, there's just, you know, consultants that, that do that. That have all the tools. They've got like cool little GPS tracking, like things where you write down all the information on a tablet or whatever.
Man, I'm not sure the municipal operations is the best place to put this, but it kind of ties into what's being talked about. And it would tie into what a, a full-time arborist might do with their job is coordinating volunteer partnerships with civic organizations and with just concerned citizens. Just kind of developing this volunteer base that goes out and does the inventory. Or does, like, it's a, it was a civic organization that did the planting of the trees at Wollatchit.
Mm-hmm.
Establishing, you know, that they are at least the labor so that the fee and luau strictly goes to the trees, you know, the, the physical product and we have volunteer.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know the best place for that, but.
Um, I think, so just to set, just to set expect, expectations around volunteer labor. That is also a union issue, so the city cannot itself organize volunteers to go do tree planting because that is a function that, you know, our employees do. However, we can partner with other organizations that coordinate those types of volunteer things. Which I think is why on Wollatchit, they had another organization um, put that together. So I just wanna set expectations. If, you know, in the future, you're like, why are these, all these other organizations organizing volunteers to go do this? Why isn't the city doing it? It's a, it's a union issue and we can't have volunteers doing the same labor as our employees. But I do think that, yes, an urban forester could be the person creating those partnerships and like being like, hey, we have a priority planting area. Are your volunteers interested in doing XYZ?
And I just wanna say, I, I recognize the labor issue is really complicated. So we're for a port, we have Longshore, it's a really powerful union. And we've come to um a place where we use nonprofit labor. And they work side by side with our labor. They can come and work. So I just, I think that's uh the risk of offending the city. I, I think some leadership there, you ought to be able to make some progress on that. And, and I, all due respects to the unions, they, they, that's awesome. But there's a lot of examples in public life where um entities have worked through that.
Okay.
I just, I'd like to tag along on that. Point out, you know, way back when I, I worked in a park district that was unionized. And we actually wound up using, um, you know, we called it the Juve Crew, the uh folks out of juvenile detention centers. Um, there was no problem with the union, it was AFL-CIO. And uh, there wasn't any, there wasn't any problem with it, because the work they were doing was like eventually, I, I think we used, started using goats as well to clear poison ivy. I mean, all the stuff that, you know, we gladly gave it to, you know, to the crews to do. Um, kind of like what happened about a month or so ago, where here in, for the parks. Um, just helpful citizens were guided by, you know, that, yeah, and it, you know, laid down chips and cut ivy, so.
All right. Um, any other comments about municipal operations, strategies or actions? Okay, again, we can always, you know, like toggle back and forth, but um, so community collaboration and engagement goal. Build stronger community engagement, public participation, enforced forest stewardship. Um, oh, so there's the established tree banker fund. I do agree that I think that would fit better in municipal operations. Um, formalizing relationships with the organization, so I think that's kind of what um you're getting at and uh that could definitely be part of, you know, the arborist kind of scope of work. Um, establishing a heritage tree designation, I think, is a really interesting one. That would allow people to nominate trees of cultural or historical significance that, you know, like of a certain diameter, standard height or a certain age. And so they would kind of be protected indefinitely. And that is something I, I think that's extremely important for um uh, the Pialup tribe, for any other kind of indigenous uh recog- recognition. Why, my, why is that word recognition? Thank you, my goodness. Um, because cedar trees are special to the Coast Salish uh peoples. So there's a lot of um special groves in the area that um we can have the opportunity to protect.
I would suggest then you add that to the verbiage a little bit, because I, at first I thought this was, well, what is, what are we gaining by doing this? But it sounds like there are some externalities that are at play here as well. So that kind of indigenous, you know, native people connection is very important, would be important to make clear here. Clear to me at least, maybe, maybe the other guy saw it, but I, I didn't see that part.
Hmm.
That's a good point, Bob. I would also suggest it here, if there is a way that the city can do this, when we get our arb- our, our arborist on board, can we offer technical assistance to homeowners associations with respect to uh planting trees and determining the appropriate species?
I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Uh, quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what would the Urban Forestry Advisory Board do? What would they be responsible for?
Um, so it's a recommendation from the consultant, because having an urban forestry board, forestry advisory board is part of um, like these three things that you need to do to have Tree City status. And so um, an urban forestry advisory board, you know, if we had an urban forestry advisory board, I think like a lot of this plan review would probably be in, in their purview. They could review heritage tree designations, they could um, kind of guide the scope of work for the urban forester. Um, they could also help get uh volunteers together or inform, help formalize those relationships with other organizations. Um, I think they, they would, they would add capacity to the city, just like you all add capacity. Having just different voices and public input on municipal operations.
Some jurisdictions say um, buy input or even guide um how any of these are, are spent.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So that, that's something, somebody's gonna have to decide, right, how to allocate that money. And so um, having that board.
Yeah. Um, and so just, I, I threw out the Tree City USA status. That is a award, a designation that's managed by um the Arbor Day Foundation, which are not, is a nonprofit um organization. It basically just tells, it tells the public that you're a jurisdiction that cares about trees and it also makes you eligible for certain grants.
Maybe that's a mechanism to, you know, foster that partnership.
Yeah.
The mission is for nonprofits and volunteers that could be a pipeline to get past whatever resistance there might be.
Yeah, so Tree City designation, you have to um have a tree board. You have to spend a minimum of two dollars per capita on tree planting and maintenance per year. So we spend, so it would be in our case about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We currently spend around twenty thousand dollars a year. Um, and then you have to have a tree planting event. So it's a pretty low bar to entry. Any other comments on community collaboration and engagement goals or strategies? Do we feel like this is a, I think something that's come up with all of the goals we've seen so far, they're maybe not specific enough? Do you feel like this is? All of the goals we've seen so far, they're maybe not specific enough. Do you feel like this is specific enough of a goal?
I thought these were good. I read each one pretty carefully and they all sounded solid to me.
Okay.
Except for the heritage treatment. Now I've been educated, so now I know.
Great.
Can I? I think the question was the goal, not the stra, I like the strategies too that. I, I am always going to advocate, I just don't want to sound like a broken record. If we're going to have a goal. We need to have a conversation about whether we're, you know, shooting for something that's easy to achieve or being ambitious and it's got to have. Something you can measure to.
Yeah.
And I feel like all these could, could be beefed up in that area.
But there's, there's KPIs for each of the actions, right? So they got some specifics down deeper.
Yeah.
You need also a, a goal, numerical goal of some sort as well. To complement the actions.
Maybe for that overarching goal, is that more what you're talking about Commissioner Jordan?
I, I think so, but like picture us ten years from now, opening this thing up and we see this goal. And it says build a stronger community engagement, public participation. How would we, what, what would we say? How, staff, did we do that? And what would you all say that, I mean? I think it would be. It would be very subjective.
Yeah.
And maybe that's okay.
I almost wonder, I mean, the goal, great, it's not exactly measurable as, except by the strategies. If we do not currently have a tree bank fund and when five, 10, 20 years from now we do, that's. There. If we have an advisory board, that's clearly, if we now have. You know, the tree designation, if we are now a tree city, each of those things show movement toward the goal. Even if the goal isn't expressly measurable.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I agree, your, your measure, measurable indicators are within your strategies.
I think it's, yeah, it's also a little bit. Maybe incomplete since I don't have all the actions up there and the actions do have, as Commissioner Soltis mentioned, KPIs. Attached to them. Okay. Are people sleepy or just slowing down? So. We will get. You know, once we get this a little bit more refined and we take this to study session, I'm hoping to develop a kind of. Separate living spreadsheet, I love a spreadsheet of. All of these strategies and actions and convene a work group so that we can really focus on urban, urban forestry. Implementation. I wanted to just throw out that these are some things that I think we can get done in the next one to five years, just to. Let you know that we are thinking about implementation and that there are a lot of things that we can get done quickly. So. If, if any of you have any comments on whether or not you think, you know, these are on track. Or if you want to see more different things on here, feel free to also just, of course, you can always email me. Robin, let me know that the council study session is actually September fourteenth, but. Regardless, my deadline of the end of the month is much appreciated, so I can get, get things edited before they go to council. So. Yeah, if you want to take more time to think about it, that's fine. If you have any comments on that, I am all ears.
I have just one, perhaps a question. What, what is the reference here to recruit? Urban forestry and environmental professionals? What is the context?
Good, good question. So this is an action related to the urban forestry advisory board.
Okay.
Yeah. So these are actions underneath strategies, sorry, out of context.
A couple of comments. The second one, update tree preservation ordinance, this relates to my earlier comment, I say and approve. Applicable development regulations.
Yeah, great, that's, that's great.
Broaden that a little bit would be, I, I, good for me. And a second one, the three to one, we didn't talk about this earlier, but that really worries me. Replacement of three to, three, three trees for everyone. Well, I, I'm a kind of like, I've mentioned this before, if that one is a mature oak tree. And those three are, you know, a little dinky, see, whatever kind of trees. That's not, to me, a reasonable replacement ratio. It's got to be more related to. What was it, DH eight? And the size of the canopy, if you're, how do you equate three to one when you have something major being lost? Something small replacing it. It doesn't seem to work in my mind.
Okay. Right now, we have. If you, if you knock down, it's not specific to preservation areas, but if you knock down. A tree during construction, you know, say you have a. A six-inch caliper tree that you knocked down that was supposed to be preserved, you have to replant at one and a half times. The. Count diameter. Of trees, so that's. What, so nine inches worth of trees. So maybe we could take. We already have that standard somewhere, so maybe we could take that elsewhere.
Yeah, you know what I'm trying to get at here? It seems that you have equitable trade-off if you lose a, a large tree. Three little ones don't equate to replacement.
Yeah.
And there's got to be, I'm sure there's some technical way to say that differently.
Yeah.
In terms of the size of the canopy or the size of the diameter if replaced. But it just worries me a little bit that some developer could take advantage of that. So I, I met your requirement.
Yeah.
There's three trees for you.
Yeah, I think also, I think the tree density. System will help with that because then we're, it is considering like the tree. Doesn't necessarily consider the tree getting knocked down, but it does consider the tree diameter when you're thinking about what to preserve and what not to preserve. Yeah, Commissioner Jordan?
Yeah, great comments, Commissioner. I totally agree. And, and then the flip of that is whatever that. I don't know, we used to do like diameter breast height and take the measurement there and. That if a developer preserves a big tree, they should get more credit. I think we talked about that as well. Because we should be incentivizing those big trees to stick around. I'm not necessarily related to this, I have a couple of, of other questions that I was wondering about. Does the, does the city have the GIS backbone infrastructure to really? Do all this work and then capture it and keep it in a, you know, in, in GIS, I assume is what it would be and. You guys have a, the, the IT systems to support this plan?
Yes, we already have a tree tracking system. That, but it just doesn't have, you know. It doesn't have all of the different descriptors that we talked about being necessary. So I think it's just like. Maybe species, but not for all of them and like. Condition and location.
Yeah.
But there's a lot more, there's a lot more information that we would want in a comprehensive inventory.
I know at my agency, our, our planners and engineers want to do more things. That our GI system just can't accommodate. I don't know if it's because it's old or if it's not the newest version or if you have to buy different licenses. So I was just curious. And then my other question is, have you all thought about like a, a dashboard? When it comes to urban forestry, that's something that's easy for citizens to see where we are. You know, what the goals are and just a, a, a really easy interface, because it's, I think people really care about trees. But as we've done tonight, you can really dig into the, the weeds.
Yeah, maybe we could make a, well, I would have to make it. A story map.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of the, I think that's as like fancy as we get right now.
Cool. Story maps are great. Anything we can do to make it easy for our citizens to see where we are and where we want to go, I'd, I'd be all for.
That's a good idea.
I would add to that story map you're going to do, Roxanne, that. The history of Gig Harbor is quite interesting in terms of trees too. We, we have, we've been logged off a couple of times maybe.
Oh, interesting.
You know, starting, if you started out way back when, I mean, we got a nice, interesting story to tell. I mean, that was what made Gig Harbor, along with fishing, was logging it way back when. So anyway, it could be an interesting story to your point and if people would be interested in, that's kind of a way to hook them into the whole. Forestry, then forestry now.
I haven't been to the Harbor History Museum. Do they have like photos of logging that they could share, do you think?
I, I would suspect they do.
Okay. Good idea.
They didn't do bad either.
I have a quick question because I know this is the first one of these we've ever had and we're, you guys are just starting along on this process. But I am kind of curious what the timeframe is for having a more fleshed out. Measurable or, or defined incentive and, you know, fee in lieu of replacement plans. Related to this.
Yeah, so that is a long haul. I don't think I can tell you definitively, but I, I. We have a draft of the tree ordinance. I think it would probably need, I don't know, maybe like six more months. Six, six more months for us to like get it to, you know, a place we'd be proud of. And adopt it. And then I think. From that point, maybe we can start working on the development regulations. The stuff, yeah, it takes time and I mean, we don't have a bunch of minions running around. It's me and Robin, so. Yeah, but I, I appreciate that you, you want to see this happen sooner than later. I do too.
Is there any possibility that we could review the tree ordinance before it goes to?
Oh, yes, it will most definite, yeah, it will most definitely be coming through planning commission, yeah.
And it's a vast improvement, just right out of the box and, and, yeah. Just doesn't, doesn't do justice to our values and.
My sense is this, this body here is really interested in trees, which is great. I'm so glad that, that we are. Is there a possibility, to me, that's a topic that I'd advocate to the chair, that we do a co-briefing with the city council? So that they could hear our comments directly. Just for your consideration.
I think that's a great idea.
You mean with the, the ordinance or the plan?
Well, maybe both, but I was definitely thinking about the development regulations.
Yeah. That's what I thought, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Um, just a related question in regards to the urban forester. And it made me think about the climate action plan for a second. So we've been bold enough to propose a urban forester. For the urban forest management plan and the overall function, which is important for the city. But I'm not sure in the climate action plan, we've spoken yet about adding a climate action. Lead. And it would seem to me that the job could be equally as daunting under climate action plan. To require. A, a full-time employee. Have you guys had that around amongst yourselves yet?
Certainly have. I think maybe. The, you know, the climate action consultant didn't say as explicitly as the urban forestry consultant, like. You need, you have enough work to hire someone. And I know, like, I think Bainbridge Island has always held up as this example of shining climate action. Because they have, I think, like, three staff members working on climate stuff there. They also have like an endowed fund. Just for climate stuff. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's like a off-base or anything, it just. I don't, I don't know where, if we've ever had any in-depth conversation about it, but I think it has mostly. To do with the fact that the consultant didn't necessarily like recommend it as strongly as the urban forestry consultant did.
I think that's, I think that's fair. Yeah, we can certainly. Have that conversation. We'll see if that, if there's a place for that discussion after. Or in conjunction with the adoption of the plan or as we move into incorporating it into. Conference, not a great place to have that discussion, but. Right now is, it's a, it's a little bit of a funky time, frankly. We are, I think I've said it before, we're down. A, a plan, we haven't filled an open position. We're going to pick up somebody to work on the comp plan and. And if there's, you know, some concern, not, yeah, like if there's some concern about that stuff, so. We have to always be, you know, judicious about when we, when we advocate for, for staff, but. I think, I think after, after we adopt the, the climate action plan, I think that will be the next conversation is how we. How we implement, how we make it real. And so at that point. We'd be talking more about staff needs.
Yeah, I'm going to have to make implementation plans for both this and the climate action plan, so I think. At that point, that will be a critical juncture. Thank you for bringing that up.
I would just like to offer a general comment here. This, as others that you've put forward is, is an excellent plan. You have addressed what is really the elephant in the room, money. And you've identified in, in the plan, various potential sources. I, I am encouraged by the fact that you've identified some, as you call them here, quick wins. As you prioritize the things that this plan can do with limited resources. I, I'm curious though, what is your opinion on the likelihood of any of those sources you list? Generating a, a reasonable amount of funds such that you can do something. Like hire an urban forestry planner.
I don't think we have numbers on anything yet.
I think we'll get there. But, you know, in terms of the, of the timeframe. But it's going to, it's going to be about, you know, the. Carrot stick in terms of in lieu of banking and, and all of that and how we can leverage that. Grant funding, it's going to be a combination of, of different factors. But we're going to get there. I'm, I'm, I'm confident. I mean, in terms of the priority of hiring somebody. To, to manage or to help manage the urban forestry piece, I'm, I'm confident. That's, that's enough of a priority.
That would take a lot of load off of our planning technicians too, because they field. I'm sure Cindy can attest. You field calls about trees all the time, every day.
There's no. That's not sustainable in all of the ways that we define that word. That's just, it makes it a little. I mean, we have requirements, right? We don't just give them away. You have to show that there's a, there's a need. But a, a free permit is a little bit of a, a weird uniform.
I would also say something like a tree and, like a tree in lieu fund, that's going to be dependent upon also development permits. So it's not like this kind of constant stream.
I'll, I'll look forward to hearing the, the regulations when they come before our. Our committee because I, I'm aware of things that have been done in other communities and, and as somebody alluded to earlier. Making it painful for violating those city regulations. Where those funds from, from that pain can be used to do good elsewhere.
Yeah.
And that's a good point. That's something we want to talk about. That's another front that relates to trees is revising. Huge chunks of our code enforcement. Code and, and how we, which we haven't penalized folks. For thinking that they can, you know, cut first and, and ask for permission or forgiveness or whatever. If, if we make that, but we talked about that a bit before. If those penalties are sticking up, number one, it deters people from doing it in the first place and, and when you take that money and you. Put it in work on and, and use it to, to help things better.
If you haven't looked up this. Story from New Jersey where this guy cut down thirty-six trees on the mountainside. And the code enforcement and replanting effectively bankrupted him, you should.
The, the big one I am familiar with is down in Lacey. There, there were some trees that surrounded a, a commercial development and they were mature trees. They, they were there when the development was made and. They, they were there when the development was made and uh, these buildings had sat empty for quite a long time and they were purchased and, and, and the new owner came in with some chainsaws. Uh, and there were complaints, uh, and, and the city said timeout. Uh, leveled some extremely substantial fines and, and required them to, to plant elsewhere a pretty substantial number of trees. I, I don't remember the number, but it was a lot.
Yeah. Um, so I was told in my tree ordinance update, I couldn't, I couldn't write the stick part of the tree ordinance. So I don't get to do that. I can write carrots.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, I, I mean, this whole thing's great. I think it kind of clarifies our values and goals. Um, a- and frankly, I'm encouraged that, I mean, we've had a net gain since twenty seventeen. So, um, uh, I mean, that's encouraging. Um, I think we do also need to keep into perspective our housing goals and demands. And, um, be cognizant that we don't want to, I mean, any more barriers to that only increase costs or costs and affordability. Um, so I guess we can strive for a plan that, um, uh, that be at least maintains or increases our canopy, but also the quality of that canopy. And I think when we look at our urban forest, it's at one point in time and we need to keep in mind that the trees do grow. So having a good maintenance, as you mentioned, and, um, a, a good perspective on where we are now and, and, and how that will look in the next, you know, five, ten, twenty years too, um, is important. But again, um, we've got a lot of demands with housing and.
We do. I don't think there are mutuals to, I think it's.
Sure.
There's a way, again, clustering density, other battles to be fought for sure. Um, but we shouldn't have to sacrifice.
One for the other.
There's a way.
Yeah.
Roxanne, you, uh, I get your point. I'm guessing that electeds or others have told you, you can't write the, the stick part. But you can use us, right? You can come to us and we can, we can say, write a stick part and then you, I, I, I just hope that you'll leverage us, right? You know, to the maximum extent possible. And if the city council ultimately says still no stick, let us see if we can help you or.
Well, the stick will be in the code enforcement chapter.
Okay.
We're getting the stick. I just don't get to write it.
Okay.
Cause she would say, yeah, for a thousand dollars a tree.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
What's wrong with that? Right.
The other. Exactly. What's wrong with a thousand a tree?
Uh, we love trees. Um, the other thing I was wondering is, do you all have the, the staff capacity to be tracking? Like, there's a lot of, well, I think there's a lot of federal funding, whether it's from the Inflation Reduction Act and, and things like that. States cap and trade, clean fuels. There's all these revenue sources that are out there now. Are you able to kind of track to see if there's anything that helps you offset some of these costs in terms of whether it be, uh, FTEs or projects? Do, do you have someone looking or for that stuff?
We get emails from the state all the time from Department of Commerce, but um, also expectations, you know, we're in planning, so we make the plan, but then a lot of this implementation is going to come from public works. And so they are able, you know, they have access, I think, to like a wider amount of funding through, directly through the feds for capital projects where they can account for trees in their budget. So, um, I think a part of implementation is going to be getting together that kind of like work group to like talk quarterly about where we're going with tree goals. Um, I'm really nervous about putting another meeting on our city engineers' calendar, but um, I think it's going to be important and just like getting in their ear that like, hey, does your budget include replanting? Hey, does your budget include planting for this? Uh, you know, preservation area, things of that nature. Yeah.
Just a couple of thoughts. And again, kind of being a newbie, you know, pardon me if I'm crashing into the, and this is going way, way back. The, you know, talking, going back to the arborist position potentially, um, working as a groundskeeper for a park system, they had specialist positions that were still considered groundskeepers or park workers or whatever, but they were, you know, so like there was, you know, like park, park worker one, two, three in it. I'm, I'm, I'm making a huge assumption here that there's something similar to that in public works for the maintenance folks or, I don't know. But could there, could there be like a specialist position, at least kind of as a bridge that would move into something more?
I mean, yeah, we've definitely talked about, uh, training and certification, arborist certifications for our uh, current maintenance technicians. We also have a maintenance technician who is a certified arborist. He's just not, we don't have a classification for him to kind of like move up. So that could be a really good opportunity for Dave. I don't know how interested he'd be do in, you know, like doing outreach and stuff, but, um, who knows, you know?
And then when I thought, you know, it's like the, the, one of the pages I really, really like is the, um, quantifying the, the benefits to the tree canopy and, you know, the actual monetary value of reductions in CO2 and da, 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 da. And I was just thinking like, could that be one of the links to the climate change, you know, climate action plan? Where you know, that's as an example, but maybe even broadening it to, cause there's other ways of going green that bring reductions, you know, like, you know, green algae on your rooftop or something. I'm, you know, I'm kind of being silly, but, but there are. And so would there be a way of trying to, you know, strengthen that, I, I guess, or broaden that element of it so that the quantification in dollar amounts covers not just tree canopy, but it covers the, um, an opening into having, you know, you know, other, other ways of being able to get reductions as well. I'm not being very clear, but I'm sorry. So feel free to ask a question, because that.
I could help maybe a little bit of that, I think. It, it seems like, I think you're saying is, um, it's more than just tree canopy that affects carbon sequestration. And, you know, maybe it's all the critical areas of like the wet ones and they do the same thing that the forests do, that they, in a different way. So all those natural areas can contribute to the climate action plan. And there's a, there's a, a strong linkage between these two. So any place that we can make that linkage clear would be a really good thing because every little bit helps the whole sequestration problem.
Okay.
So, you know, kind of these markers back and forth between urban forestry management plan, the climate action plan, environmental element that we're all getting ready to write, I know, very soon. It's all got to tie together and it, it's complimentary. It's very complimentary in my mind, like you said.
It's like, exactly. Cause you know, we're talking about, you know, other ecosystems, if you will, besides the canopy. And it was, it blew my mind when I read that the, I think in the UK that the peat the peat bogs or whatever, you know, that they've been around for like a zillion years actually do more for carbon sequestration than the Amazon junglers. I mean, it's like, it's crazy. You go, you go on like, you know, and I don't know, I haven't looked at the data underneath that. But if it's even like close to that or half of that, I mean, it's amazing that, I mean, there's basically, there's these other systems that, and so, yeah, that's kind of what sparked it. So.
Okay. Any other comments about the plan? Again, please feel free to email me anything that comes to mind, uh, by the end of the month, please. Uh, really appreciate all of your thoughts. Did you have another comment?
No, I was just, uh, uh, okay. So that, that answered my question. The end of your slide presentation. Uh, what I did want to ask is I know last time we did, took some action to, um, essentially let the city council know how we felt. And is that appropriate here? I mean, is, should we take a poll and say that we're all in favor of this?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. So let's go, let's go down. Or, oh, sorry.
So I'm totally in favor of it, but can we, um, say, uh, as recommended, that, and edits and additions or something like that? Cause I mean, there's a, we gave them a lot of feedback today and it's probably going to change a little bit because of that and.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. So that would include any additional comments that we forward to Roxanne that she would include in the report. So it would include the plan as stated here as well as any, uh, anything else that comes out of our subsequent comments to today's meeting. If that's, uh, agreeable to all of you, then maybe we'll just start down there.
I concur with that proposal.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Agreed. In favor.
Also in favor of that.
I.
Uh, in favor.
Okay. And I'm in favor as well.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Okay. So you have your direction. All right. So now we have to move on to other business. We do have one, uh, procedural matter that we have to discuss here. And that is for our next meeting, which is September seventh, both Commissioner Soltis and I will be absent. Uh, so, um, my question is, uh, is anybody else going to be absent for that meeting? I want to make sure we have a quorum. You're all going to be here? Okay.
What day is that again, John?
September seventh. Okay. So it looks like that one, two, three, four, four members will be here. That's a quorum. Okay. Yeah, after liberty. Yeah. Okay. Well, that's, that was another reason to check. Okay. So our senior member will chair the meeting.
Don't get power mad, Larry.
Okay. So we will go ahead when, and what will be our, the topic for that meeting? Do we have one? Okay. All right. So maybe you might have something else. And, and just, just for the record also, I, I am absent on these, uh, second meeting in September.
And so I have actually, uh, the twenty-first, second meeting in September, uh, hoping that one week to the twenty-eighth.
That would be terrific.
That would be amazing.
Would like to give a full, uh, the transmission and capital at their study session on the twenty-eighth that saves us a little bit ago and just, um, once, um, for in that thing. So if, if that's a legal, we'll set out so if we can bump the, the forty-first to the twenty-eighth, um, if helpful for us, then we can give them a bit of progress that we've made behind the scenes aside from the
Does that work for the rest of you? See a lot of heads nodding. So, okay, that, well, that sounds good. Okay. Anything else? Yes.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to apologize to the board and the staff. I went on vacation last couple of weeks ago, uh, the week that we had a commission meeting and I had full intent to call in on Thursday, but by the time Thursday rolled around, I actually forgot. So I apologize. I was in Southern California, so I see I'm unexcused and I, I deserve to be unexcused. Uh, so apologies for that. But I'd like to get back to the commissioner's question. There is a interesting development at the end of, um, the, the trail, um, where they have leveled a, all the, um, trees and looks like they've rode the, the dirt up a little bit. Um, I was curious if staff or anyone on the board didn't know what that development was, and it's probably in the county. I recognize it's probably not. Yeah, but do you all know what, what it is? I'd really be interested. There's no signage. There's no, you know, there's nothing there for the public to comment on.
That there was a previous development that had gone in there, uh, which is probably not too far from that one. It was also in the county. Did the same thing, took all the trees out. And that, this was several years ago, so it's not recent. But that's what causes me to be somewhat skeptical of the county's uh, commitments to preserving trees and, and to climate action.
It seems odd though, because the trail, it's between the trail and the highway. Whereas the other developments have been on the other side of the trail away from the high, I, um, and Commissioner, you said it's near, I should know the streets better, but Twenty-fourth and Reed or something like that.
Yeah, go on, go on the mic.
So it's like, uh, if you just take Reed all the way down, it turns into Twenty-fourth. And so, and then it, there's like this little right turn at forty-something maybe, or I, wherever, wherever the end of the, the Cushman Trail is, that endpoint, there's a trailhead and you, you walk in like maybe two hundred meters or something and you'll see it on the the east side of the trail. So I think it's opposite. I'm not, you know,
Yeah.
I get my directions wrong, but yeah, but it's down that area. So I'd have to look on a map to.
And, and for your, the chair's consideration, I don't even know if we can do this, but, um, if that is county and it's gone through a county process, are we as a, as a city of Gig Harbor Planning Commission Board, can we write a letter to the county saying how disappointed we are? And I, and I, I realize I'm jumping the gun because you're going to tell us what the development is and maybe it's a park. Um, but it's really frustrating.
No, I, I would agree. And I, I actually had some pictures of my, on my phone of some other development that has gone on in the county. And I had one which shows a pile of, uh, debris, wood debris, about twenty feet high. And this is being taken out to build one house. And, you know, it just, it, it just goes on and on and on, uh, that we see these. So, yeah, I, and I, I think maybe at one time we had talked about the possibility of us having a joint meeting with the county group that, uh, is active. I, I can't remember what they call it now, but that's supposed to be monitoring planning and development in unincorporated Pierce County on the Kitsap Peninsula. And I'm wondering if maybe we ought to try to move that forward and see if we can get together with them and express our concerns directly to them. And maybe go out and take some pictures of some of these areas that we're concerned about and say, you know, look, is this really what you want?
Now, the, the general, um, whether it's MOU or some, some kind of agreement, um, and maybe it's not that formal, um, that, that us doing, um, projects in the UDA or outside of our jurisdiction. We have some issues where we don't get those all the time. I mean, the comments, they're not necessarily implemented. I don't want to, I don't have to rush it on, on Pierce County, but, um, but we had some issues with that relationship. Um, and maybe, you know, maybe we didn't, I don't know. But there, there is an effort put to get together sort of broadly, um, about, you know, been talking about animation. We've mentioned a couple of times. We can expect, so if I can find out what the status is, um, of that process and then we're, um, there we have the conversation. The, the other project that we're talking about, uh, appears to be, and I don't know a lot of detail, but it is, but it's, it's, that's, um, uh, line up with a, a very large, uh, public that, and that, uh, is, is working on, it's, um, very close to golf course and their links. Um, and I'm going to get more information of that, but that, I would hope that, and that parts is, you know, mindful and, and, and open space that they did agree on. It sounds like that.
So that might be their new recreation center that they have proposed. Yes. That'd be great. Yeah. And also would you talk with Carl and see if there's? Yeah, and also, would you talk with Carl and see if there's anything that we as a commission could do to express our concerns in a constructive way to the county about some of the development that is happening around us?
Okay, friendly amendment and let the city council know we're concerned?
Yes.
Uh, in addition to expressing how we figure out to communicate with this, this, the county.
Great idea. Okay. All right, anything else to come before the commission? Yes?
I'm, I'm sorry, just back to the uh scheduling. Um, given the absences on the seventh, wi- and the importance of the housing, if that was next on the agenda, could we move to the fourteenth? I don't know if that'd be acceptable or not, but that, that would just be my, I would be available on the fourteenth.
Would that work for you, Bob? Because that's, that's still, that's the day I'll be coming back, I believe.
That would help a little.
In the UK. Okay. Okay, let it, let us know, and uh it sounds like Bob would be available if if I'm not. I'll have to check to be sure. Yeah, if I can make it, I will. I'll, I'll be a little jet lagged, but. Uh, yes. Commissioner Soltes.
Uh, new business for just a second. Um, uh, another new idea that we seem to have a lot of new ideas tonight.
This is great.
Is it possible that, yeah, I know your staff is, is, you're really shorthanded. Um, we need to do some elements in the comprehensive plan that are probably maybe we, this commission could take on like the environmental element, for example, for a first draft. Is uh if that's not in your capacity right now, or if that's not Bill's job, I don't know if he's doing environmental element or not. But um I think we could probably pull off a a draft uh as a subteam of the commission, just theoretically, if there's a couple of people wanting to work on it.
So in other words, we could have a subcommittee that could work on it?
Yeah, and really help you guys out a lot. They're laughing.
I, that, um, may I?
Yes.
Uh, that uh seems, I, it's a great idea. It's o- obviously in the spirit of trying to help out. It seems a little odd, because um now we're giving, uh, you know, it's easy for me to say, Roxanne, did you think about X, Y, and Z? It's a little trickier at the commission level to be like, well, why'd you say that? Um, you know, I just, I I feel like that our role is pretty clear that staff brings us stuff and we give feedback to staff. Now we're gonna bring ourselves some stuff. Just doesn't feel right. We might really like it, but I just don't know. I just don't know if that's our role, uh, but I know you're doing it in the spirit of trying to be helpful.
I I I would concur. Specifically, we are an advisory body. And if we took on that, we would be stepping outside of our role and our authorities.
We wouldn't hire the staff. Yeah, that is, that's sample, um, I appreciate it. Um, for all of us, yeah. Um, but we do respect money, uh, to, I think, in terms of grant money, um, uh, to put through uh climate. And um, it looks like we may, uh, always, we need to move forward on certain elements. Uh, here, then we've gone back and forth, we've talked to the point two, and then it seemed like that was the thing that we left. Um, but there's a good chunk of money that will be made available. We don't know, you know, what, um, how much, where we are on the the pecking order there, but I think we have a good shot at at getting some dough and and so specifically the the environment slash the climate uh elements, sustainability elements, um, I think, I think we have a good chance of, I mean, that Rox.
Yeah, I I think uh Commerce realized that they were asking people to do a lot, adopting these climate change elements kind of like midway through their comprehensive planning process. So thi- this week, we received an a, an announcement that Commerce is um giving, has grant funding specifically for developing climate change elements. So that would mean we would, to be eligible, we would have to have a climate element done by June fifteenth, twenty twenty four. And the application is due October fifteenth. So it's a very short turnaround, but um I think they just want people to get these done.
Yes.
So, so they're like, throw money at it. So I'll be applying for that and we'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Soltes, does that satisfy your position?
My work is is done here.
Okay.
I scared him into the uh getting more money. No, no, not that help.
Okay, is there anything else? Any other parting shots that we have tonight? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Cheryl entertained a motion then to adjourn. A second? Second, I heard a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned.